Good afternoon, colleagues of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. A roll call has been open six, 1:00 p.m. And we do have thirteen members here in a council chamber that does constitute a quorum. And we will call this special session into order at 1:39 p.m. And at this time, Chair Parrish, can you provide our invocation this afternoon?
Good afternoon, everyone here. It's good to be here in the council chambers. Thank you, Speaker Curly. Yes, I can give the invocation today. Let's all bow and a word of prayer today. Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for the opportunity to serve the Navajo Nation and the Navajo people. Today, we ask for guidance, for peace, for kindness in the words that we share, and also wisdom in the debates that we have today, or the, just the thoughtfulness behind what we have to say, Lord. And I just pray for my colleagues here on the 25th Navajo Nation Council, those that are here in the chambers, those that are in Washington, D.C. right now. This week, I know that there are many discussions about our federal dollars and also our local general fund dollars in our budget. I just ask for wisdom for each and every one of my colleagues, and I also pray for their families back at home, for their spouses, for also their children that continue to support them in the work that they do. I know that this job is not easy, and I just ask for continued protection over each and every one of my colleagues here. I also pray for our speaker, give her the leadership and wisdom that she needs to help us in these circumstances, including the special council session today. I also pray for our president, our vice president, our acting chief justice, the justices across the nation. May you also be with them today. And today, I also pray for our nation. May you continue to guide us in the decisions that we have to make today. And I also pray for our first responders. I know that there are many tragedies that have happened this week that they've had to respond to, so I just ask blessings for them and their families. Lord, I also ask for blessings over this special council session today, and I thank you. I pray these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Chair Parrish, for the invocation this afternoon. And colleagues, we'll move down to number two, recognition of guests and visiting officials. We do see many of our staff and also our LDAs that are here with us. Those are listening via Zoom and also via social media on YouTube. Good afternoon to all of our constituents that are listening across the Navajo Nation. Next, we delegate law.
Thank you, Shadaja. I also want to thank Honorable Chair Parrish for the prayer, and I just want to take some time to ask for a moment of silence for four people that lost their lives in a recent crash that happened yesterday in Chinlea. And it is with heavy hearts that our community mourns the loss of these heroic individuals that gave their life serving the Navajo Nation. And so, this plane crash happened in Chinlea, at the Chinlea Airport. We have been working with our Chinlea Comprehensive Healthcare Facility administrators and also the Chinlea Chapter leadership, as well as our administration, to be of assistance while they conduct their investigation. It's times like this when we, as elected leaders, as legislators, think of preventative measures of how this could have been avoided and how to better maintain our transportation services for our Dene people. It's also times like this when we think of some of the challenges that are coming from the federal level that defeat the funding for these specific purposes. We always talk about the health, education, and welfare of our people, and when you experience a tragedy like this, it shows us how delicate life is, as well as how delicate our system for services that extend out not only to our main communities but other neighboring communities. I'm very thankful for the generous outpour of condolences for the families that have been affected. I am very thankful and very proud of Chinlea Police Department for responding to this emergency situation. I also want to thank our EMS EMTs, our fire department, as they too have been frontline workers during this devastating event. And I want to also just thank our community for being very patient. When an event happens like this, we close down all of our services. A lot of these individuals that needed air med transport have resorted to the ground transportation, which has also affected our healthcare within our community. We've also seen a heightened increase in planes landing across the Navajo Nation, so we do need to coordinate with our federal aviation and create a sustainable partnership for our communities, as we have seen an increase in the influx of flights that occur over the Navajo Nation. I also want to take some time to remember those that are grieving. A lot of our healthcare professionals knew these individuals on a personal basis, and they are a close-knit family within the healthcare system, probably not just in Chinlea, but they probably had flights all across the Navajo Nation, as well as their hometown in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And although we have not received the names of those that have passed on, we want to take some time to remember their services. Many times, these traveling nurses and these air meds, they travel, and they dedicate their lives to the people. A lot of them have served for many decades and years, and they give unconditionally. They put their life first and foremost before others, and that's the heroism that I want to acknowledge today. And as And I also pray for their families back at home, for their spouses, for also their children that continue to support them in the work that they do. I know that this job is not easy. And I just ask for continued protection over each and every one of my colleagues here. I also pray for our speaker. Give her the leadership and wisdom that she needs to help us in these circumstances, including the special council session today. I also pray for our president, our vice president, our acting chief justice, the justices across the nation. May you also be with them today. And today, I also pray for our nation. May you continue to guide us in the decisions that we have to make today. And I also pray for the our first responders. I know that there are many tragedies that have happened this week that they've had to respond to. So I just ask blessings for them and their families. Lord, I also ask for blessings over this special council session today. And I thank you. I pray these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Chair Parrish, for the invocation this afternoon. And colleagues, we will move down to number two, recognition of guests and visiting officials. We do see many of our staff and also our LDAs that are here with us. Those are listening via Zoom and also via social media on YouTube. Good afternoon to all of our constituents that are listening across the Navajo Nation. Next, we delegate Law.
Thank you, Shadaja. I also want to thank Honorable Chair Parrish for the prayer. And I just want to take some time to ask for a moment of silence for four people that lost their lives in a recent crash that happened yesterday in Chinli. And it is with heavy hearts that our community mourns the loss of these heroic individuals that gave their life serving the Navajo Nation. And so this plane crash happened in Chinli at the Chinli Airport. We have been working with our Chinli Comprehensive Healthcare Facility administrators and also the Chinli Chapter leadership, as well as our administration, to be of assistance while they conduct their investigation. It's times like this when we, as elected leaders, as legislators, think of preventative measures of how this could have been avoided and how to better maintain our transportation services for our Dinev people. It's also times like this when we think of some of the challenges that are coming from the federal level that defeat the funding for these specific purposes. We always talk about the health, education, and welfare of our people. And when you experience a tragedy like this, it shows us how delicate life is, as well as how delicate our system for services that extend out not only to our main communities, but other neighboring communities. I'm very thankful for the generous outpour of condolences for the families that have been affected. I am very thankful and very proud of Chinli Police Department for responding to this emergency situation. I also want to thank our EMS EMTs, our fire department, as they too have been frontline workers during this devastating event. And I want to also just thank our community for being very patient. When an event happens like this, we close down all of our services. A lot of these individuals that needed air med transport have resorted to the ground transportation, which has also affected our healthcare within our community. We've also seen a heightened increase in planes landing across the Navajo Nation. So we do need to coordinate with our federal aviation and create a sustainable partnership for our communities, as we have seen an increase in the influx of flights that occur over the Navajo Nation. I also want to take some time to remember those that are grieving. A lot of our healthcare professionals knew these individuals on a personal basis, and they are a close-knit family within the healthcare system, probably not just in Chinli, but they probably had flights all across the Navajo Nation, as well as their hometown in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And although we have not received the names of those that have passed on, we want to take some time to remember their services. Many times, these traveling nurses and these air meds, they travel and they dedicate their lives to the people. A lot of them have served for many decades and years, and they give unconditionally. They put their life first and foremost before others. And that's the heroism that I want to acknowledge today. And as elected leaders of the Navajo Nation, we just want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to each and everyone who has been affected. And also, we want to take time to remember those that gave their life, but they are not forgotten, but honored in this special time. So with that, Speaker, I just want to say, if we could have a moment of silence, that's what I would like to ask and request of my colleagues here today. And again, thank you to everyone who has been supportive during this time, and also for the outpour and for their generosity, their prayers, it's all felt. And with that, let the healing begin for Chinli, as well as the entire Navajo Nation. Thank you, Speaker, and I will waive the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law, for that special recognition, as well to the community of Chinli. And we will recognize that moment of silence after all recognitions this afternoon. And colleagues, are there any other recognitions? I don't see anyone in queue, so at this time, colleagues, if you could stand and join, stop as well, and myself, and do a moment of silence for the community of Chinli and also Chinli IHS Service Unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law. And we will go forward with our special session agenda. Number three, review and adopt the agenda. And staff, if you could help read our proposed agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the Navajo Nation Council. This is the proposed agenda of the 25th Navajo Nation Council Special Session, Wednesday, August 6, 2025, 1:00 PM. Presiding Honorable Chris Presiding Chair, Honorable Chris Lynn Curly, Speaker, 25th Navajo Nation Council. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials to the Navajo Nation. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, old business none. Five, new business legislation, 0180-25. Six, close of session announcement adjournment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, staff, Ms. Johnson, for reading our agenda into the record. And colleagues, I'm going to recognize a motion. Motion by Chair Beth James, second. Second by Delegate Helene Anesbegay. And colleagues, I'm going to go to the floor for any amendments that do need to take place on adopting our agenda this afternoon. Do see in queue Chair Riquenes.
Good afternoon, Honorable Speaker Curly, Honorable Members of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. I would like to make a motion for Amendment One, which is to add on to the agenda of this special session an emergency legislation number 0182-25. That'll be my motion. Thank you. I reserve my time.
And that is reserved time of four minutes and 27 seconds. Chair Riquenes.
And we will give us a few minutes, few seconds to add Amendment Number One on to the board here for consideration. And staff, if you could help read the title into the record, so then we'll recognize a second after.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the Navajo Nation Council, legislation 0182-25, in action relating to an emergency for the Navajo Nation Council, removing Heather Claw as Attorney General of the Navajo Nation. Prem sponsors, Honorable Riquenes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff, for reading that into the record. And colleagues, is there a second? Second by Chair Shondine Parrish. And I'm going to renew the board here for Amendment Number One. Any comments? You can put on a minute. First, for Amendment Number One, we do have Delegate Simpson. Five minutes to Amendment Number One.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the 25th Council. Thank you. Madam Speaker, it's interesting. You know, I didn't attend that meeting last week in Phoenix, but from my understanding, this was mentioned that proposed legislation will be coming forward. And I'm not sure how. It's probably simple legislation. Simple legislation that can be drafted, probably in 30 minutes. And now, we talk about transparency. We talk about transparency, and, you know, even though it's an emergency legislation, I believe that it should have been drafted right away and put, you know, on a five-day comment period, but this is emergency, but still put on the on our website that this is the proposed emergency legislation to be forthcoming. But we're doing it today. And again, we knew about this proposed legislation to be forthcoming. And it's just something that I think we owe to the people to make comments, even though it's an emergency legislation, that it couldn't have been put on the website this morning. I'm not sure if it's been put on the website or not. And I'm not sure, being as being as being Number One, it's probably been posted right now. And actually, I haven't looked at the DIB to when this was posted or not. So it's just interesting. Interesting how this thing is kind of about during the special session, so. But I respect my colleagues, vote they forward or against it. I respect that. That's democracy right there. So I just, for my, I think to me, still could have gone on a five-day comment here for the people. And I know some of the Facebook pages from some of my colleagues, we always say just go back to the people and see what the people say. And we heard some both ways, but I still think it should have been posted as a regular proposed legislation and here in front of the people. That's why we had a five-day comment. I don't know what the reasons behind to have been just being an emergency legislation. I don't know, because I didn't attend that meeting last week. So with that, I would urge my colleagues to vote this proposed legislation, emergency legislation down and put it in a five-day comment period. So let's hear from our people, what they stated. Maybe have another special session to vote on legislation after we get some comments. You know, we hear from both sides. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for allowing me to speak on this Amendment Number One. And again, for me, I will oppose this Amendment Number One. And with that, I waive the rest of my time. Madam Speaker, members of the 25th Council, ahead.
Thank you, Delegate Simpson. And the legislation is posted on the website on DIB. So just to clarify that question. And going back in queue for Amendment Number One, colleagues. Chair Crotty.
Oh, yeah, thank you. She has Chairman Anes for the amendment. So I'm gonna try to be as careful with my comments because of the sensitive nature of the amendment, the status of the emergency, and the impact for Navajo Nation. And I was a red vote for the nominee. And I was a red vote because of how the uranium transportation contract was signed and not with the full involvement of impacted communities, leadership, and accountability for those communities that would have to suffer through this uranium transportation. And so with that in mind, Speaker, and Council, and my colleagues, I too believe in transparency. I believe in healthy debate. I believe in the opportunity to provide different points of views. And unless there's additional information that's provided to this council on either an executive session or here on the floor, on why this is an action that needs to be considered today and a special session added to the agenda as an emergency, I have concerns just on the process. And that's what I'm, so I've already said, I'm on the record opposing the nominee and now current Attorney General because of how the uranium issue was handled. And I feel like this is parallel. If we're asking executive leadership, Navajo Nation leadership, to discuss and come together and have conversations, that's the point of view that I'm coming from right now, to see what concerns can be disclosed and what information can be disclosed publicly, because this is a huge pivot from just a few days ago on the council floor and how that vote was processed, and also in terms of, you know, today's attendance, and just having that appropriate information. I just want to be consistent. I'm not saying that the concerns, I'm not invalidating the concerns. What I'm saying is how they're being presented, and what mechanisms have we used to explain these conflicts or these concerns to the public that we represent. I've read some of the, you know, the opinions while our Attorney General was in the acting position. Are those, you know, like, I need to have a greater idea of why we need to take immediate action. And I'm okay not agreeing on that premise. So I feel at this time, there's nothing here that I can go back to my community and say, we added this legislation to the agenda. These are the reasons why. And I felt, you know, in our action with the former Attorney General, we gave the public that opportunity. Although we couldn't, again, couldn't disclose some ongoing issues and conflicts, we at least were able to engage and let the people provide some input, you know, and to challenge us on some of our assertions or provide additional context. And so I just wanted to state for the record, I'll be voting against this amendment. You know, it's the vote of the council and the delegate, and I'm here however we move forward. But I, and I appreciate the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Crotty, for voicing against Amendment Number One. We do have a motion and a second in place, and colleagues are there. I will first go to Delegate Shawna Anlaw. Five minutes to Amendment Number One.
Thank you, Speaker. So after hearing Shana and Chanelle, I think that it is, they did make good comments. And I believe the process is something that everyone needs to consider here. So I would like to request and make a motion to go into executive session on this amendment. Thank you, reserve my time.
And that is a reserved time of four minutes and 35 seconds. So going back to our Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order, Rule 23, Executive Session, it does read, upon a motion by any delegate duly second and majority vote of the delegates casting the vote, the council may resolve itself into an executive session to discuss any business item on the adopted agenda, which may require confidentiality and/or are of a sensitive nature. A motion under this rule shall take precedence over any motion. And colleagues, I do have. So the motion does read on the screen here, Delegate Law, motion to enter into executive session. For, can you do a specify a time?
There will be for no more than an hour.
Thank you, Delegate Law, and that is written here on the screen. It does read motion to enter into executive session for no more than one hour. Concur with that language, Delegate Law? Is there a second? Second by Chair Brenda Jesus. All right. Okay. So based on the ruling, Office of Legislative Council did flag me, they do want to specify a reason why the motion cannot be carried through. So at this time, Ms. Espino.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members of the Navajo Nation Council. If you look under Rule 23, Executive Session, in order to go into executive session, it does require that the matter be on an adopted agenda. And at this time, the agenda has yet to be adopted. In, an alternative could be that the council go into a recess to caucus if you do need to have a discussion on this matter. However, again, for an executive session, it does require that there, that the item be on the adopted agenda. that the item be on the adopted agenda. Okay, so for further clarification, what the council could do is adopt the agenda and then motion for an executive session. Go into executive session after the item is adopted on the agenda or the agenda is adopted with the item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espino, for explanation on Rule 23 with our Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. And colleagues, I did seek for a motion and a second. So based on that explanation from our Legislative Council, that will be out of order. So we would go back to our Amendment Number One made motion second. I will go back to reserve time. Delegate Law with four minutes and 35 seconds.
Okay, so the whole point of going into executive session is to decide whether or not this amendment will make it to the agenda. Therefore, with the explanation that was given to us, we request for a recess for not more than an hour. And so that will allow the council to caucus on the Amendment One. Reserve my time. Thank you.
That will be reserved time of four minutes and 12 seconds. And colleagues, I know we're right in the middle of adopting our agenda. Another option, as our Legislative Council has said, we can recess for an hour. Point of privilege raised by Honorable Simpson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and members of the council. This is what our legislative council stated, that we can go in caucus. Remember, we go in caucus, it's still open meeting. It's not a closed meeting. So anything that's said in caucus meeting still can be conveyed to the public. So if we're going to talk about executive session after we adopt the agenda and go to this legislation, yes, the executive session stays within the council. But again, to the office of the Senate Council, if we go in a caucus meeting, that meeting, that's open to the public, right? And nothing still cannot be... The information in our caucus can be conveyed to the public. That may be my question to the office of the Senate Council.
Thank you, Delegate Simpson, for that point of privilege. I'm going to turn over to Ms. Espino.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members of the Navajo Nation Council and Delegate Simpson. I appreciate you pointing out what I stated in regards to caucus because I do need to clarify. First, to answer your question, yes, caucus is a discussion that is still held on the floor and would be... I don't see here in the rules that it would be held in executive session, so that could also be public. However, I do need to correct myself when I did state that the council could recess and go into caucus. Caucus does require, again, that the matter being discussed is part of the agenda. So that was an error on my part. And so a caucus would not be the correct way to move forward with a discussion to be held in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espino, for addressing that point of privilege. And go back to reserve time. Delegate Law with four minutes and 12 seconds.
So Speaker, with that, there will be no recess. The request would be to go straight to a caucus. So the motion would be to caucus. Thank you. Reserve my time.
That will be a reserved time of 4:03. And just based on the explanation that was given by Office or Legal Counsel, she did say that to enter to a caucus, it has to be on something that's on the agenda. So Ms. Espino, if you can clarify?
Yes, again, that is correct. But I do have a recommendation. The council could recess and have an attorney-client discussion, which would be held confidentially. That is another option. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Espino. Then going back to Delegate Law with four minutes and three seconds.
We request for your guidance. You do have the authority to call a recess. And just as our Legislative Council mentioned, it could be the attorney-client privilege recess. So that would be on you, and I'll reserve the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you again, Delegate Law. And that is time of 3:49, Delegate Law. And colleagues, since there's a lot of the needed information from our guidance with Legal Counsel and also some of the questions that are coming here from the floor, colleagues, I'm going to call for recess no more than one hour. And we can take that recess at 2:12 PM. So colleagues, if you do wish to be...
Colleagues roll call will be open.
Colleagues, roll call will be open. Colleagues, we did do a roll call. We do have thirteen members here on the floor so that those constitute a quorum, and we will exit out of recess and reconvene at 3:28 PM. And colleagues, we were on a recap. We are on the main motion of the agenda. We do have a motion for the agenda. Chair James seconded by Delegate Helena Nezbege, and we also have a current motion on the floor for amendment number one, motion by Chair Riquinez, seconded by Chair Shandine Parrish, and I don't see anyone in queue, but I do have reserved time by Delegate Law with three minutes and forty-nine seconds.
Thank you, Shadeja. I want to thank you for calling a recess, for allowing the members of the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council to convene so that they can have their questions answered on this amendment, and I believe that everyone received the information needed to move forward. So I will go ahead and just want to say thank you again for the recess, and I will waive the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Law, waives the rest of her time. And colleagues, anyone else to comment on amendment number one? I also don't have any more reserved time. Twice and three times, colleagues. I'll put two minutes on the board, colleagues. This is a majority vote of the delegates that are casting a vote, and we will allow two minutes on the board here. And colleagues, we do have five excused absences today. These are the delegates that you see on the screen that are in black. They are currently attending the Tribal Interior Budget Council in Oklahoma. So that is a quarterly TIBIC meeting, so many of our delegates that are there are part of the subcommittees of TIBIC, so they're the reason why they're excused. And colleagues, we do have a vote of nine in favor and three opposed. So adding legislation zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five does carry, and going back to the main motion of our agenda, adopting the agenda. Any more comments, questions on the agenda? Second call and third call, and this will be a vote on the main motion of the agenda. Oh, yes, there is that wave. Going back to my notes. Thank you, Chair Nez. And we will put the voting board live, two minutes, and this is for the main motion on of our agenda. We'll do a roll call vote. Chair Cruddy, how do you vote? Red. Vote's red. Delegate Helena Nezbege, how do you vote? Green? And that is a vote of ten in favor, two opposed, with Speaker not voting, so main motion carries. And colleagues, we will go back to our agenda. That agenda will be, the adopted agenda will be sent out via email, and we also print those. And going down to number four, old business, none. Number five, new business, legislation one-eight-zero-dash, it should be two-five. And if I could get Assistant from Chair James to help Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you, Quodo Nana, Speaker Curly. So with that, staff, if you can assist us with reading legislation zero-one-eight-zero-dash-two-four into the record. We do have on sponsor Speaker Crystal Lynn Curly here.
Thank you, Chair Pro Tem. Legislation zero-one-eight-zero-dash-two-five, an action relating to an emergency in the Navajo Nation Council urging Congress to support and pass the Indian Programs' Advanced Appropriations Act of 2025, and urging the President of the United States to include Indian programs in the FY 2026 and future federal budget proposals. Prime sponsor is Honorable Crystal Lynn Curly. This legislation is final authority at Navajo Nation Council. There are no committee reports attached to this legislation. Per Navajo Nation Council rules of order, rule nine, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Chair Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you. With that, do I have a motion? Motion made by Honorable George Toad, seconded by Honorable Dr. Andy Nez. Committee, council, are there any questions? Going once, going twice, going three times? With that, let's go to the board, two minutes on the board. Okay, Nana, we are on legislation number zero-one-eight-zero-dash-two-four. Two-five, two-four. Okay, on the agenda, it says two-four. Okay. All right. Correction, legislation number zero-one-eight-zero-dash-two-five. Thank you for that, colleagues, for that correction. Honorable George Toad and Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, and then currently doing the voting on that. We do have fifty-five seconds left on that, council. So with that, I think we do have thirty seconds left. Thank you again, council, the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council for being here and being present. The updated approved agenda for this special session for today has been emailed out, and I believe they will also get that hard copy to you as well. So with that, no more time. And so, Honorable Amber Cruddy, how do you vote? Honorable Cruddy votes green. Okay, so with that, we do have twelve in favor, zero opposed. Pro Tem Chair not voting. Thank you. So with that, motion passes for legislation zero-one-eight-zero-dash-two-five. All right, so with that, moving on to item number five, new business, B, legislation number zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five. We do have sponsor here, Honorable Riquinez. So with that, so staff, if you can assist us in reading the legislation into the record, zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem. Legislation zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five, an action relating to an emergency for the Navajo Nation Council, removing Heather Claw as Attorney General of the Navajo Nation. This legislation is final authority with Navajo Nation Council. Prime sponsor is Riquinez. Per Navajo Nation Council, rules of order, rule nine, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Speaker Pro Tem.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel, do I have a motion? Motion made by Honorable Brenda Jesus. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Honorable Shandine Parrish. And so with that, counsel, are there any questions pertaining to legislation number zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five? Going once, going two times, going three times? Let's go to the board, two minutes. Thank you again. We are currently voting on new business, item B, legislation number zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five. Motioning parties are Honorable Chairwoman Brenda Jesus and Honorable Chairwoman Shandine Parrish. And so with that, it's on the board. We do have one minute and twenty-five seconds left, council, and there is one minute and ten seconds left. Staff are now distributing the document of the updated agenda, but it was emailed to us, council. So with that, we do have thirty-five seconds left. Honorable Cruddy, how do you vote? Honorable Speaker Crystal Lynn Curly, how do you vote? Who else is here? And then we do All right, so with that, the vote for legislation number zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five is in favor, eleven, opposed is one, and we have seven excused council delegates. And so with that, Pro Tem Chair not voting. So with that, motion carries for legislation zero-one-eight-two-dash-two-five. Again, thank you very much, council. And so with that, we'll move on to the next item, item number six, close of session, announcement adjournment. Are there any announcements, council? Going once? Rika celebration on Friday? Luncheon on Friday. So real quick announcements for you guys, council. Honorable Jesus.
Okay, Pro Tem Speaker, I just wanted to make an announcement, and this is within the delegate district of Honorable Chair Nez. INTEC is doing a beauty way land surrender for the land that they've mined for so many years, and I believe it's this coming Friday starting at eleven AM at Denny Nahanzad Mining Area. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman Honorable Jesus. With that, let's move on to announcement. Honorable Dr. Andy Nez.
Yes, thank you, Chair Pro Tem. Colleagues and everyone who are here but also listening online, I do want to welcome back our students. A lot of them are returning back to school either this past Monday, some as far, or as early as a couple of weeks ago. But I do want to inform the general public that, you know, we have these concerns, especially within my delegate region, leading from Crystal on to Navajo Fort here to Winderock, that we have a lot of commuters who treat our roadways like speed racetracks, and so these are not, and you shouldn't need these reminders, but so our students, if you haven't recognized or realized, So our students, if you haven't recognized or realized, they like to wear black, and so they're often going back and forth between our roads. And so for a lot of our employees and others who are visiting the area, just be very cognizant as you travel through these school zones. There are flashers and traffic lights, stoplights for a reason, so just be very cautious of that, not only within our delegate regions but across the Navajo Nation and anywhere that you commute. So I just wanted to make that announcement and welcome our students back, our teachers and educators, so everyone a very successful and safe school year. Yeah, I waive my time.
Yeah, thank you, Shia, for that. So with that announcement, Honorable Speaker Crystal Lynn Curly.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker, for helping this afternoon. Thank you, colleagues, for considering some very important legislations today. I just wanted to extend appreciation for passing the first legislation tomorrow. Many of our excused delegates that are at TIBIC will be advocating for advanced funding within BIE, BIA, and also IHS. As we all know, during the last administration, we did get advance appropriations for IHS. So now we're going to be doing another attempt to ask for mandatory funding for all three of our agencies that do a lot of work here on the Navajo Nation. So just want to say thank you for that. And we do have a regular Na'bikia Ticket Committee scheduled on the fourteenth. That is Navajo Nation Kotoka Day. So we are looking to schedule Na'bikia Ticket Committee rescheduled back to the twenty-first. I know many of our employees will be having, it will be an observe holiday on the fourteenth. And also on Friday, we will be having a luncheon to celebrate the congressional passage of RICA, that is the expansion and also the extension for many of our families. To commemorate a lot of our community members and also the delegates yourselves doing many years of advocacy, so I wanted to greatly appreciate Chair Crowdie for leading this within the past administrations. So it's a little bit piece of hope, but I know there's a lot of work that still needs to be done in terms of RICA, so the invitation should be in your calendar, colleagues. And also fair season is among us, this practice safety for our colleagues and also communities. And you know, we do have ceremonial that's coming this week, next week, Central Agency Council. And we'll be in touch, and many of those calendar invites will be coming from the office of the Speaker. So thank you, colleagues, and have a wonderful day and drive home safely.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Speaker Crystal Lynn Curly. With that, we do have one more of our colleague, Council, hold on. Honorable Helena Nesbegay, announcement.
Oh, ya dehdo, Heta Nana, for giving me this time to speak. Ado, first of all, and foremost of all, I became a Nala again on... Monday morning on my way to here. So, um, so my son and my daughter-in-law, they live in Oregon, so I didn't get to witness my, the birth of my granddaughter. So she was, she's nine pounds and two ounce. So, yeah, so healthy baby. So Shonaliya Jana Husli. Ado, in my delegate region, we're still getting a lot of smoke from the North Rim, and, um, we're even, it's going away as far as Ki'anta, it's reaching Ki'anta right now. So, eh, that they're having a public, a public meeting tonight, but I, I, they're just not containing the, the fires there, so. Maybe more firefighters needs to come in, I don't know, but that's on the North Rim. So, ee ya'hot e do, and if you guys need to donate anything, you know, just let Speaker know. And then our emergency management team, Ms. Sandoval's been out there helping us out, but it's not declared as emergency yet, even though we get a lot of smoke in our areas. So, ee ya'hot eso. And that's, that's it. So, ahhot e, goni jaha'ha'si do, let's hear.
Okay, with that, I don't see anybody in the queue again for announcement, and I believe Shadja, Honorable Helena Nesbegay, did not reserve her time. So with that, Council, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Honorable George Tolt, seconded by Brenda Jesus. And so with that, are there any questions? Not for adjournment here at three fifty-two P. M. Let's go to board. Thank you, Heta. Shonat Ahno Leneeki, for being here with us today. Don't forget to vote for adjournment at three fifty-two P. M. So, so with that, all Council delegates voted, and so with that, we do have a vote of twelve in favor to adjourn at three fifty-two P. M., zero opposed, seven not voting, and that includes Pro Tem Chair. So with that, have a good afternoon, stay travels, everyone. Heta, thank you.